Thanks. Hey, the Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Let's call the February 10th, 2025 Situate School Committee meeting to order here at 6:01. And we'll do a roll call vote. Barkowski.
Yes, here.
Hello. Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Brandalini, yes. Limbom, yes. Alrighty, thank you. Let's begin with public comment. We have no participants in person, so I will look to virtual hands. I see one hand raised. I can unmute you. Ms. Whitrow. Am I though? How's that?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly clear.
Wait. Hi, everyone. Been a while, and I saw that the school calendar was up again for discussion. I did listen into the January 27th recording. I first actually wanted to make a comment on the recordings. It took me a little bit and a call to Nicole to find out where I could find the recordings easily. So I was wanting to request if with the agendas and minutes, it would be possible to link the YouTube recordings to the sit.org page to make it easy to find. So that was a little comment on that before I move on to the school calendar. I think everyone in the room probably knows how I feel because I've spoke before about the school calendar and before and after Labor Day. And I appreciate that some of you, Maria and Nicole, brought up on the January 27th meeting, some of the points that I've brought up in the past about the start time. And I've tried to look at this objectively with pros and cons of what is better for our district as a whole. And I'm actually having a hard time finding pros for starting after Labor Day as from an educational standpoint. What I've read on a post even on Situate Moms page, people were talking about the weather is better. I want to take my family vacation time when it's less busy. But I'm not seeing valid reasons educationally of why we need to start after Labor Day when our counterparts in the state as well as across the country are starting earlier and getting in those days. I just feel like September learning is more beneficial to our students and teachers versus June learning when all of those spring tests have already happened. So I would love to hear, I know you brought it up in the last meeting, about teachers and what they say. I'd love to hear if that's going to be touched on tonight on the discussion of what the teachers say about fresh brains at the beginning of the school year versus June. I think that's really important. Again, we, in the past couple of years, we have the Juneteenth, which falls into place, which the rest of the state and the rest of the country may not have to deal with that we do. As well as data on how many fall athletes do we actually have at Situate High School? Those are the types of things I hope we can hear tonight when that's discussed. The amount of fall athletes, the amount of even psycho football and cheerleaders who are practicing and already in town. As well as absences. How many absences have we had when we have a half a day in June versus after the Juneteenth? So I'm looking to hear some of that data tonight. But more importantly, what are the other towns in Massachusetts doing? Do we have the data on that? But other than that, I think the, I even looked in the KFC pool is already closed in that last week of August. So I even went to as far as let me check that calendar and sure enough, the past few years, that that pool is even closed because those college lifeguards are gone. So we don't have the camps available. We do not have the babysitters here, et cetera. But I think most of it was touched upon at the last meeting, so I'll leave it at that. But I just wanted to chime in and put some comments in there before you discuss that tonight. So I appreciate you all and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Whitrow. Noted, I took, I took a couple of notes and I think we probably will touch on a lot of those points. So thank you again. All right. Not seeing any other hands raised remotely. Let us move on to our student report. Janice.
Thank you for having me. I would like to begin with a sports update. So congratulations to a wrestling team for winning our Patriot League title, which was highlighted by beating the Plymouth South team who had not lost a league since 2011. And Principal Ranger noted that he was Plymouth South's coach for 29 years. So he is happy for the Sailors, feeling a sense of remorse for his old team. Seems like they're struggling now that he's gone. Congratulations to the boys hockey team for winning at least a share of the Patriot League title and good luck as they move on to tournaments. And this past Saturday was the Winter Track League meet. Congratulations to Jack DeLacondro, Grayson Foley, Tyler Morrison, and Ben Roach for setting a new school record for the four by two hundred. Grace Taylor for placing first place in the high jump. And Lauren Thompson for throwing thirty-eight six in the shot put and auto qualifying for Nationals. That is quite the accomplishment. And on February 12th this week, we will have Step Up Night for eighth grade caregivers, which will be run by the counseling department. And they'll host a presentation for parents to prepare them for their students attending high school next year. And also on Wednesday, the counseling department will offer an armed service vocational aptitude battery test battery for any students interested in this unique opportunity. And furthermore, this past week, the English AP mock exams took place and another round is scheduled for February 12th. Thank you to Ms. Messner for all of her hard work for making this happen. And furthermore, we collected another survey surrounding wind block data. Tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders shared the input administration asked two questions for, do you feel wind block is useful? Seventy-nine point nine percent of students said yes. And do you feel wind block should be longer? Ninety-eight point one percent said yes. And that is all I have for you guys today. Any questions?
Is wind block still the same? It hasn't changed, it's been safer?
No, it's thirty-nine minutes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to have, yeah. Only because I was there, but the swim team, that's how sessionals, girls on Saturday, boys on Sunday. But they're permitted. And I think the girls are pretty good. We had, I think, a second place, third, second or third place for freshmen. Bella, Bella Chaxton.
Oh, Bella, yes. She also set a school record. I believe she set a new school record.
She did at one of the meets against Marshall, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She's a bad. Yes, sorry, I missed the wind block.
Sorry, I was there.
So, thank you.
No, I'm okay. Well, just about wind block, but it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I have the answer.
Well, I guess I was just curious, just to clarify, in wind block, students are completely self-directed during that time?
Um, I believe as a teacher, you can make your student, like you can schedule them in your room if they're like struggling in your class or need to make up tests. But students are supposed to schedule themselves for the week where they see best. But a teacher could intervene basically and put them in their class.
So like for an example, you might like visit one teacher on Monday and a different teacher on Tuesday. And when you go to their class, what happens?
Some teachers will do like, I know back when I took chemistry, like some teachers offer like additional material, like lectures, mini lectures. Some teachers will help you go over tests if you didn't do too well on it.
Yeah.
Some kids just like to chat with their teachers.
Yeah.
Kind of depends.
Yeah. Thank you, that's what I thought. I was just kind of trying to remind myself of how it looks at the high school level. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Nicole. I know, I know we'll talk about it later when we bring up the school calendar, but I thought this was an appropriate time to also just give a shout out to the high school and the article that came out and the situation. I just love, once again, we're bringing student voice. So to Ms. Whitrow's point about voice, if she hasn't seen that article, I would highly recommend reading it. It really does talk about how the students feel about the change in the calendar. So just, just wanted to plant that as another resource.
Great point, absolutely. Scary. All right. Our leadership report with Dr. Rapp or maybe Superintendent Ruckett.
Thank you everyone, thank you. So we've presented at the hearing initially to the school committee and to the community. And last week, we presented the revised budget, FY26 budget with feedback from school committee and the community. In this evening, we're looking for a vote. So if Dr. Rapp has anything to add, we'll turn it back over to the school committee. And just as a reminder for folks, tomorrow night, Dr. Rapp and I will be presenting before the select board approximately seven thirty, eight P M. And on Thursday night, we'll be presenting before the advisory board, which meets virtually at six thirty, I believe. So if folks are interested on writing more feedback and getting another opportunity to look at that presentation live, those are two more opportunities that we will be doing that. Also, we'll be presenting our Blue Book at town meeting. That will be a comprehensive kind of summary, once it's approved, to share with the community, to give them, in layman's terms, kind of what each aspect of the budget brings, some of those numbers to life. And with words and numbers and hopefully a way that's articulated so that the non educator can understand. And I think we've had good success with that. So that's also another access point where the community can get a hold of those information. And finally, to the community that's watching or that eventually watches this. And the process goes right to town meeting. So if you have any questions, concerns, this will all be posted. It's a lot of information, so it might take some time to digest. We'd be happy to speak with anyone in our community about anything on our budget. One of the things we find ourselves on is the transparency of our budget. So we're again happy to have any conversations with our community members, staff about our budget and open that up to the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ruckett. Anything else, Dr. Rapp?
No, thank you. Just to echo that point and to say that last week's presentation is online. So anybody can take a look at it.
All right. Any comments or further anything?
Just when, when is the earliest time that the, that the Blue Books will be available for the community?
I should have them by the first week in March.
And are we in the central office to pick up? Are we going to provide them anyplace else, like in the library or?
Typically, I have them at town hall. I certainly can put them in the library as well.
It's a good idea. Oh, they love that.
Sure.
Yeah, bubble over there. And I just want to, just hearing bits and pieces from surrounding communities, the difficulties they're having with their budgets, I want to thank you for having this, you know. No override. No. Just a great budget. Yes, no cuts. Thank you.
All right, we'll take a motion on the FY26 budget.
Can I just offer something? Sorry, Nicole, I was trying to get.
Yes, no, go ahead, ahead.
Um, so I, I wanted to echo what Jana said too. I've appreciated having multiple meetings, being able to sit with it and the dialogue that we've had back and forth, both with the schools, but also as a committee. It's been a really good conversation. I'm certainly in support of this budget for all the reasons Jana said and more. I just would love, as we move forward, to think about, as we present for next year, thinking about data and like not just making the case for what you want for next year, but showing us, you know, early what, what the payoff was. I know we've talked a lot about ROI, so like maybe Tom and Ryan, you know, some of the preliminary presentation of the budget for next year could be a presentation of the ROI. I just really want to see that. It's not going to stop my vote tonight. I just want to keep talking about that and see how we can, can do that.
Thank you for saying that. If I could comment, I actually plan on putting some of that information in the Blue Book. So I'll hear it loud.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Barkowski. Great point. All right. Take a vote if no one else has any added comments. Janice.
Firewood. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the FY26 budget as presented.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Barkowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Limbom.
Yes.
Brandalini, yes. All right. Fantastic. Okay, up next, we have a teaching and learning update. Ms. Shula, our World Language Department chair.
Dance the slides with the arrows. All right, great. So thank you so much for having me this evening. I have to say honestly, this is one of my favorite nights because I love talking about teaching and learning. And I'm really proud of the work we're doing in world language, and I think you're going to see that tonight. The other thing I want to say is I think it will be abundantly clear to you throughout this presentation that the work we are doing is so closely aligned with our strategic plan, with our school goals at Gates, with our school goals at the high school, with our superintendent schools. So you're going to hear things about rigorous curriculum. You're going to hear about excellent instruction. You are going to hear benchmarking, assessments, and helping students grow throughout this entire presentation. So what are we working on? Not a whole lot of brand and new initiatives. We're still refining and tweaking things that we implemented over the past couple of years. So we continue to award the Seal of By Literacy, which is the Massachusetts designation, which you've heard me talk about a thousand times because I just love it. And I love this little chart that's up there for you to see because we are on this amazing upward trajectory. We have come a really long way since 2021. That growth is exceptional. So last year, class of 2024, we awarded seventeen students on stage with the Seal of By Literacy medal. This year, it will be at least nineteen. We are still collecting some final scores from, from the lovely week of mid-years where everybody fell ill with the flu. But we're at at least nineteen students in the class of 2025. What is new this year was I had an awesome opportunity to collaborate with our Director of Supplemental Services, Ms. Ward. And we submitted a grant to the state. And we were awarded the grant luckily. And so we're going to be able to expand our stamp testing opportunity to our eighth grade students, which we're really excited about. It's not that we anticipate that our eighth graders will qualify for the Seal of By Literacy. There's still little ways away from that. But we now have a piece of data that will tell us how effective our middle school program is. Because we spent three solid years on a novice program. And it will be great to look at that data and see if the slow rollout and approach is actually effective with students. In addition, we may, moving forward, have a piece of data that will help us make informed decisions about placement for students in ninth grade. Right now, we use a grade book and it's fine, but it's not the best. And so having another piece of data with a cutoff score will really refine that practice of recommending for either the honors or CP level. One of the things that's come out of that grant is we are serving on the World Language Advisory Team for the state of Massachusetts right now. Which I remember saying to last year, I really felt like we were on the brink of putting the Situate Public Schools World Language Department on the map. And this is the type of work that will put us on the map. Collaborating with districts, hearing what they're doing, sharing what we're doing, has really been a rewarding experience. It's been extremely validating. I had a meeting last Friday with the state, the Center of Applied Linguistics in Washington, D.C. attended. And it was really fun when, when they were asking us questions and talking to us about how we afford and how we got teachers on board to do proficiency instruction and the growth and our cutoff scores and all those things. They're like, this is the stuff we need to see more of in the state. So I feel really good about the work that we're doing and that the state is even recognizing that as well. We are also new this year, working with Avant Assessment. Avant is the company that sponsors the stamp test. So we're working with them to do some professional development, which will help our teachers calibrate their scores. So we know exactly, at this point in the year, we're almost wrapping that professional development up. We know exactly what they're looking for for cutoff scores for certain proficiency levels. We had teachers on their own grade the mid-year assessments to see if they were in agreement with the raters from Avant. And we had high levels of correlating scores between what Avant was scoring our students at and what our teachers were rating their students. So that was really good. The next level of professional development we'll do this year is powering up strategies. So we have this whole half of the year and we have all of this stamped data. How are we going to help these students grow? How can we push them forward? And so we're going to spend a day with reps from Avant, learning what those powering up strategies would be. We continue to offer our pathways designation and global citizenship. In full disclosure, this is not an innovations pathway program like the one in business and environmental science. And the only reason for that is simply because the state doesn't have one yet. So that's another piece of work that we're doing with the World Language Advisory Team at the state level. And the other great thing about that is when Ms. Renner and I collaborated on that initiative, we were lock and step with, we need to have required courses, we need to have additional courses. What, what number of credits would constitute a pathway designation? Additional outside of school extracurriculars that link to the topic of the pathway program, a capstone or an internship. So we have the same requirements. So if the state and when the state is ready, Situate Public Schools is in a great position to have an additional pathway designation with the state. Another new thing this year is we are offering dual enrollment to our ninth graders in their Level Two Spanish courses this year. We're offering the dual enrollment through Quincy College. And we'll expand that to French and Mandarin as we progress through. This was just a trial year to see how it went. So ninth graders that complete, successfully complete their Spanish two course could receive college credits for doing so.
Current ninth graders?
Yes. Yep. And then you hear all about our exchanges and our trips. And you hear about them through the approval process, but you never get to really hear about them on the tail end, on the back end. But they continue to be extremely successful, probably one of the most rewarding pieces of the work that I do with the students and the teachers here. It's funny because I was thinking about this on my drive here today and I was thinking, if back in 2020 or 2021, you would ask me if I would, if I thought we would see the Spanish exchange again and the French exchange again, I wouldn't have been able to look you in the eyes and say that confidently, yes, we would. And not only have we brought those programs back, but we're expanding. So we're off to China on Friday. We've brought back the Quebec trip. And you know, Ireland is brand new. So we're in an even better place than we were five years ago. Wanted to talk quickly about the data, the stamp testing data that I talked about when I mentioned the Seal of By Literacy that we continue to award. I'll do everything I can to stay seated. I get so excited when I see charts and numbers. So I apologize, but I'm so inclined to like get up and point. So in the right hand corner of the screen, you'll see Avant Stamp Testing Scale. Those are proficiency levels. When we graduate students from the Situate Public Schools and they've been doing world language since sixth grade, we want to see them at at least a six. So that's an intermediate high student. That, I told you last year, correlates to like a four on the AP exam. That's very, very strong. So what you have in front of you, you saw this last year. This is our target end of year composite scores for our stamp tests, broken down by level, starting with level one at the bottom and then our highest level AP at the top. So those are our end of year target scores. You can see our 2023 data, our 2024 data, and this year's brand new data, 2025, which is about, I would say ninety-five percent complete. We're still working on getting a couple of kids' scores in and completed. But what's exceptional and something to highlight is that those are middle of the year scores. We have decided as a department to administer the stamp test in the middle of the year because it allows us time to process and look at student growth and provide interventions and enhancements in the classroom to ensure that all of our students are growing. I've had conversations with Mr. Lynch about like, well, maybe we do want to do it at the end of the year because maybe we would see more students getting the Seal of By Literacy. But I admire that my teachers push back about that. And they say, Kate, if we can do it in the middle of the year, we have a whole half of the year to push kids even further and to have conversations about our programming six through twelve. So it's important to see that overall, our middle of the year composite scores are just about, so meeting and in some situations exceeding our end of year target, which is great. Sometimes falling short, but only by like a tenth or a, or a twenty, right? Is that the right place value?
Hundred.
Hundred?
Hundred or a hundred.
That's what it is, right?
You know what you mean.
You know what I mean? This is why I do the world. Hundred place. Yes, okay. My God, thank God. All right. Yeah, this is embarrassing, yes. Thank God, someone knows in the room. Okay, so that's, that's something that we're really, really proud of. The other thing I want to highlight for you is, and I think I was transparent about this last year. One of the challenges that we've identified in the department is that our kids become stuck in this intermediate level. Sophomores get stuck. And that is something that happens in any language acquisition process. And we get stuck in the intermediate. I think you remember with your own children, like they started off learning language and it was ridiculous. They're picking up words every day and growing so much. And then we kind of level out a little bit. And so that happens naturally, but we were seeing that our level three students weren't doing as well as we thought they could. And so that's an area that we're seeing a little bit of growth in this year, which I'm really happy because the teachers have really worked on the curriculum and the instructions for that course.
Okay, three is ninth grade?
Yeah, three is tenth.
Tenth grade.
Yes. Three is tenth. Okay. And it's not all lollipops and lovelies. We do have some areas of growth, and so I wanted to share with you our AP data. Our enrollment is steady, but it could be better. We would love to see more students opting for the AP level class, in full disclosure. And then we saw a dip in our scores this year. And there were some reasons for that. We had to offer one of our AP courses online this year. And then we had a staffing situation. We had a staff that needed to go out on leave. And we ended up going through two substitutes in the amount of time that she was out. No one's fault at all, but just a lot of transition for the students, right? And so that could be a reason why we saw some changes in our AP score. So be interested to track that again this year. But this is definitely an area of focus for us as we continue to work on just getting better and better. So what's next? We, as a department, set out a student learning goal this year that was to take our stamped data and track individual student growth. So instead of just looking at that chart that you got to see here, now we want to look at student by student and how much growth students are achieving year to year. And so that's each teacher's, each nine through twelve grade teacher's student learning goal for the year. And they've gone about that in a variety of different ways. But ironically, what's funny is they've all used some sort of color coding system where students that are going down a level are color coded red. Students that are staying the same or they're seeing minimal growth are a yellow. And students that are growing are being color coded green. So on all of these spreadsheets, I will say that the happy thing is I'm seeing ninety percent green. Our students are really, really learning. They're really moving along on this proficiency scale. And it's, it's based on data that we're able to look at. It's not just hearsay, it's not looking at grade books and things like that. We really do have a concrete set of data to look at over a bunch of years, which helps us to, to make broader conclusions about our programming. Our professional development this year has forced us to look at how we grade and forced us to have conversations about report card grading and how it is sometimes tricky in giving an A through F grade when we have such a different scale of proficiency, a one, a two, a three, and how do you correlate that to an A, B, C in the grade book? And so we're just having conversations about that. We're having conversations and reflecting about AP, which I shared with you. We are working on expanding our dual enrollment to our French and Mandarin students for equity reasons. And I thought it would be important to share with you that we are exploring opportunities that we are exploring opportunities to grow our world language programming. Last year, we talked quickly about what about a world language program? And what were my thoughts on that? And I told you that in order for all of our students to get to that six on that proficiency scale and achieve the SEAL by Literacy, we were looking at third grade as a good target start. They've got their early literacy skills. And that addition of two years to their language learning really does push more kids. That's what ACTFL says, and ACTFL is the national organization for world language instruction. One of the things that's important to Mr. Lynch and I is equity in feeding all three of our languages. And so that would have an implication on FTEs for world language at our elementary schools. We would be looking at at least needing three to feed our French, Mandarin, and Spanish program equitably. Obviously, you've already seen the budget for next year. This is not something we are in a place to be looking at for next year. But we are continuing to explore ways in which we can bring world language down to our elementary students. And I think that's all. We've had a math lesson. We've had a world language update. We've had all the things.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kate. That was very informative.
You're welcome.
I always appreciate your enthusiasm. I have a couple of questions.
Please.
First question is, the SEAL by Literacy, can you just explain exactly what needs to be accomplished in order to receive that? And in our 19, what languages would that, was that a?
Okay. So in order to achieve or qualify for the Massachusetts SEAL by Literacy, you need a certain score on the MCAS. You need to be proficient at least on the MCAS. And you need a certain score on a state-approved assessment. And Avant Stamp, which we give, is one of those state-approved assessments. So in Massachusetts, you need a proficient score on MCAS and at least a six in all four domains on the stamp test.
So that MCAS, would that be senior year or whatever level?
So we use the sophomore year MCAS scores.
Sophomore year MCAS.
And you can qualify on the stamp test any year. So we have had freshmen qualify. But you have, if you don't qualify as a freshman, because we don't really expect that, right? You can qualify sophomore, junior, or senior year, where most of our students are qualifying junior year. And it's offered in all of the languages. I just happen to share the Spanish data just because that's our highest enrolled language.
But on the 19 that are going to get the SEAL by Literacy, what languages, is that just Spanish?
Predominantly Spanish, but not all. So there are some French students and Spanish students that are getting the SEAL by Literacy in the class of 2025.
Okay, and this isn't specific to world languages. But I'm curious, this will lead into our calendar discussion, I think. AP exams, what, are they given during the week or on the weekends?
Are given during the week.
During the week.
Over a two-week period, so 10 school days. There are morning administrations and afternoon administrations. So there's an 8:00 AM test and a noon time test.
And if, I'm not in an AP class, what am I doing during those?
You aren't going to class, business, business as usual.
Okay, and remind me again, is it May specifically?
The first two weeks in May.
Thank you.
I was just curious. So it seems like the stamp test might not like correlate well with AP if we're seeing success on stamp, but not so much on the AP exam. I was just curious. I feel like Massachusetts usually has a pretty high standard, so it's surprising that they, that there wouldn't be. I was wondering if you also agree or if I'm not.
I think it's more of a numbers theme. I think, you know, we are fortunate in Situate that we are stamp testing, I mean, this year alone, we're stamp testing 733 students from grades eight to 12.
Yeah.
Whereas when you look at the AP enrollments, we have, you know, in some cases, single-digit students taking the actual exam. So I think it just has to do with sheer volume of tests taken.
Right.
It's also like, we're offering more APs, so it's like, that's a, you know, as we enroll our high schoolers, it's like, it's choice time. And, you know, that could feed into this for.
100%.
Does it work similarly to the other APs where you can sometimes get college credit if you get a certain score in world language?
Yes. And you don't get college credit for the SEAL by Literacy, but one of the cool incentives with the state right now is you get a voucher to take the teacher's test because we're, there's such a shortage for bilingual educators, teachers of ESL, and teachers of world language. So it was really awesome to mail those letters home and touch base with some kids about like, you know, you should really take this. You should sit for this test because why not? You could get licensed. And it's just another, you know, maybe you don't feel like being a teacher now, but maybe down the road you could. So one cool perk with the SEAL by Literacy.
Thank you so much. I feel like that was just a really nice presentation. We're, it's clear, I think, for us to see what your department's vision is, your enthusiasm, obviously. You know, I think bringing some of the data with the historical trends was super helpful, too, just so we can situate it, you know, and understand. You know, I think also the fact that you guys are having such high standards and saying, no, we do want to, you know, see where we are in the middle of the year is so nice to see. So just thank you for, yeah, that's awesome. Thank you for all of that.
Checking if Dr. Rep. Foskey over there? Oh, good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to go get some math lessons for my first reader. On place value.
That's true. All right, we have new business. We have a policy being shared by our policy subcommittee. Ms. Lindbaum. Who will be beginning?
Second start. So we, at the policy subcommittee, we discussed the student competency determinations. And the reason that we are discussing this now is that with valid question two, the voters of Massachusetts decided that the MCAS would no longer be required for every student to pass in order to graduate. And so absent that, it's important for us to kind of get clear on what it is that we are expecting. This particularly is timely and very important for the current class of seniors. So in Situate, we have a small number, but still, you know, a number nonetheless of students who did not pass the 10th grade MCAS. And so for those students, we need to make sure that we are giving them, you know, the path and making sure that they're all on it in terms of what it would take for them to graduate. So in our packet, we did put the some FAQs, which might have been helpful just to kind of understand. It's one of those things where every school committee in our state is currently needing to do the same thing right now. And DESI and MASC have not really issued complete guidance. They've done this FAQ document, which is helpful, but no one has kind of said, you know, I think everyone's learning and flying the plane. We're building the plane while we fly it on this topic at the moment. One thing we did talk about at our policy subcommittee meeting is that what we can do tonight is something that we know will work immediately for those kids who really need it. And we could always revisit this next year at some point as more information becomes available or we all start to really think a little bit more about if there are other ways we would want to adjust this. Do you want to add anything?
I think that's a very good explanation. And just so people listening at home understand, in order to graduate from high school in Massachusetts, there are two requirements, the local graduation requirement. And this other piece is this competency determination that we're talking about. So previously, students met the competency determination by passing their MCAS tests and then meeting graduation requirements in Situate. Since question two passed, competency determination is no longer there. So for students who did not pass the MCAS, they're missing one of their graduation components. This policy, like Ms. Fenwick said, will provide that, especially for these, for a number of Situate students in the class of 2025 who will need this policy passed in order to earn a diploma from Situate High School. And the state has promised that it's going to look at graduation requirements. Next year would be great to have a policy from the state. It sounds like that could take several years. So that's just two points I wanted to add. Thank you.
I wanted to add that this policy, by passing this policy, it helps the current seniors that was going to look at it deeper, you know, moving forward, not waiting for the state to mark what they're on.
Well, was this policy kind of, I guess, backtested to make sure that it covers our students? That kind of how we did it? So that helped in the goal with this, with this version of it?
Yes, there is a kind of clause at the bottom that says that principal may, on a case-by-case basis, review students' transcript and determine if a successful completion of course constitutes a reasonable equivalent. So that is a sort of a catch-all for, you know, because sometimes a student might have moved here, you know, after they would have taken one of these classes. Like, there's all different sorts of circumstances that we'd want to have in mind to make sure that we, that, like I said, that there's a pathway for every child.
Makes sense. All right. Any other questions? So this is just a first reading, so thank you. And we will.
Are the students who, I guess, have not passed MCAS, are they kind of asking what they need to do in order to graduate? Is that kind of at their forefront? Is that their ultimate goal, do you think? Are they paying attention to this policy?
I think we need to, very good question. I think we need to educate. Once the policy is passed, I think we just need to educate everybody about what it means. I know the high school administration is tracking the same students that we have access to. There's a DESI report that says, who are your students who haven't met the competency determination? I know the high school administration's on top of that. I do think we have, we should reassure students when this is passed, all of our students, that they're on track to meet the graduation requirements as far as it's related to the competency determination part of it. So we still have some work to do to just educate families, I think. I know the Situation's running an article about this. Their reporters have been on top of it since the get-go. They actually participated in our meeting. So that'll help. But I think we should communicate this to families when it passes.
Makes sense. All right, thank you. That was our first reading. We'll revisit this again next time. All right, some old business here. Assistant Superintendent Lynch, you can start us off on our second reading of the 25-26 school calendar.
Sure, thank you. This is the second reading of the 25-26 school calendar. The school committee asked us to go back and make a couple of changes to reflect the committee's input. So you'll notice here on the current draft proposal, the staff return date would be Monday, August 25th, for Professional Development Day, as well as Tuesday, August 26th. The first day for students would be September, I'm sorry, August 27th. That would be the Wednesday prior to Labor Day. And their second day would be the 28th, and no work and no school on the 29th. So these were the updates that were made in line with the recommendations from the school committee. We also shared this with PD Council again to collect input from the members of the professional development council. So we're here tonight presenting the, those updated changes and for the committee's consideration.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Comments, questions from the committee on the updated calendar?
I think, I mean, we talked about this at the last meeting, but I know this topic has gotten a lot more attention since the last meeting. So I think it might be helpful to start off with just some of the reasons why we wanted to make this shift or see what the shift would look like. I think I've spent a lot of time over the last week looking at a lot of other districts' calendars to try to understand how people will make this work. And I, no one has like an amazing example of how to do this perfectly. But I think there's, in some ways, there are some competing interests. I think we've heard that there is a greater value to some of the days that's a front end of the year for the testing happens, but also just those days are more productive and full than the days at the end of the year. We also have an interest in trying to end the year in advance of the Juneteenth holiday, which is tricky because we might have snow days. And even if we plan to end it, you know, three or four days ahead of time, what's been happening is that if we have any snow days, we end up bumping up into it. We have this awkward end of the school year, which is not great for scheduling, also not great for kids and the teachers. You know, that's just, makes it very, a weird ending of the year. We also, you know, have been looking at making sure that teachers have enough professional development time and that the professional development schedule, which usually involves either full days off or early release days, is not awfully cumbersome for families. Because, you know, there's, I think, two things that matter, you know. I was going to say something else, but I forgot. So anyway, I think we're trying to figure this out. One thing I will say is that I was the person who brought this idea forward at the last meeting, although I know it's been discussed on and off for many, many years prior to meeting the committee. But I will say, you know, I do have sympathy for the fact that this particular year, because Labor Day is so early on September 1st, and the fact that a lot of trips have been planned, camps have been signed up for, like of all years to make this shift, I do think next year it just presents extra challenges. So I just want to put that out there and thinking, I've been thinking a little bit about maybe next year isn't the right year to make this shift. Maybe it's the following year when Labor Day moves to the 7th or the 8th. Those are the years when it's most problematic. I will also say, back on the first side, that next year, even with Labor Day being the earliest it could ever be, we are still running up, right up until Juneteenth. That's still going to cause a weird ending of the school year, which also, you know, provides its own challenges for everybody. So I don't know. Some of my thoughts.
Thank you for sharing. I think we should, we can go through, benefit if everybody has any thoughts or comments.
No, I would just, I would just, I mean, hecko. I think Maria did a nice job of summarizing. I also, again, just want to acknowledge, I loved hearing from the community. We got so much email this week. And for every email I got that said, start early, I got one that said, start late. So even, you know, even when Superintendent Burkett presented the data that was 50/50, and remember, it was a small N, that trend is still holding true. I'd also want to add in there, Maria, just because that Situation article, the students, so there was, you know, just, it was 77, I think, students, 71 students that responded and about.
Seventy-one, yeah.
What was it?
Seventy-one.
Thank you. Yeah, and just under 50% said they didn't want to change it. So it was still a 50, like a 50/50 kind of split. There were a group of students that were indifferent. But what I wanted to bring to bear here is also the students were talking about the tradition of Situate going back after Labor Day. So I wanted to acknowledge that. So I wanted to acknowledge that, again, not saying pro or con. The other piece that was brought up that I, that I thought was interesting was weather. And so the concern that if you're not at Gates but at the high school, the temperatures, and I would just offer, I, I can't believe I did this. I don't think I've ever done this, but I went to the almanac today. And looked at average temperatures, and actually, now, of course, there can be random days. June and August actually aren't that much different, and we, there's a likely chance that if we stay later in June, that we could get some hot weather versus August. So I just want, I just want the students to know, like, we're taking their input seriously, and I really mulled that over because I thought that was a really compelling thing to think about, like, because they're sitting in seats and it can be very hot, and how well can you learn in a really hot room? And so I just, you know, what, however we vote, I just wanted them to know we are paying attention to what they say. Um, yeah, and I don't know, Maria, I think you bring up a good point about, you know, the earliness, but given what, um, Ms. Withrow shared about the, the pool closing early and, you know, I don't know that there are a lot of camps that last week of August, even though it's an early Labor Day, I'm not convinced that it's gonna bump up against camps and, and the pool, you know, those sorts of issues, even if we decided to vote for it this year. But just, just my two cents.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. Appreciate that, and definitely agree. It was fantastic to hear from the students. And thank you to Kathy Hall for sending us that article and putting it in our view.
Oh, any of my other fellow committee members? I have a different odd question. Just about the, the PD days, and I know that the election day, we use that as PD because the schools closed. Do we, would we save any days at the end if we had like the half-day PD? Like a half-day PD? What a, how does, what a teacher prefer, I guess? What, what is, how do we get the most benefit of the PD?
So just, uh, if I could take the first question, first part of the question, if I understand it correctly, was, would there be a benefit to, to half-days? Uh, so we were required for, over the course of the year, for nine-hundred-and-ninety hours at the secondary level, nine-hundred hours. We just passed that information and it is, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's, it's pretty close. You need to have a hundred-and-eighty days of school regardless of, also, you, you're required to do that. So those are two components that, so it really doesn't, as long as we meet the nine-hundred and the nine-ninety, and we have a hundred-and-eighty show-ups, we're meeting the requirements. And then the second question was, do we, do teachers prefer a full day or a half-day? We, we talked about it in PD council a couple of times, and, um, what teachers appreciate, I think, is the ability to collaborate across the district. So, um, the, if you could set up professional development days with the opportunity for people to collaborate, that is, they would identify that as high quality from our survey. I, I would say with the half-days, logistically, it's, it's challenging sometimes, particularly last year when there was the early release, which was, uh, twelve-thirty at the elementary level, and then, and then you're contractually, um, you know, you're working till, teachers are, are working until like three-twenty-five. You can't travel between schools with that sort of tight amount of schedule, so then you can't collaborate. So I think it's more difficult to pull off on a, on a half-day. It's just because of the logistical elements. But if I were, I mean, I'm sure teachers would appreciate any time for professional development, so I don't want to say that they don't appreciate half-days. They do, any opportunity they have, they, they do appreciate. I just want to state that it's a little more challenging when you do the half-days, especially if you ask them to leave their building and go to another building, you're just losing time.
So it's more beneficial for the full-day PD? I, I mean, I
Yeah, I, I think that the statement is true. There's only four of those in the contract, but I think that that could be a better way to
And there's only really one day, because, I mean, if schools close on the election, it's a no-brainer.
I have a question about that too, though, because there, is there any discussion or was it, what placement of value has there been on? If you have one a month, one of the half-days a month, which honestly, Maria, they're not joking, we've looked at like fifty calendars in state, pretty much, between the two buses. There are a lot of them doing the half-day PD, and those ones tend to have a tighter start date, end date than us, and don't seem to get caught up in Juneteenth. But I'm wondering if there's value in, when you have a half-day PD, being like, oh, we'll pick up on this again next month, or we can, you know, table that or incorporate it into our next, whereas with just the four, it's sort of like one, lots of time lapse than another. Is that accurate, or am I misunderstanding?
If you're, if you're asking for my opinion, I think teachers will, will gladly work very hard for any time that they're given to work together. I think it, my opinion is also that there's another constituency that we may need to check in with about this idea about if parents are having early release once a month, I think that they would be another group of people that would, that might be a change that really hasn't been talked about in this, uh, these iterations that, that we've done. So, um, uh, if it were the committee's decision to add half-days, I think we would need to figure out where, where to put them. And I would say, um, teachers always appreciate being able to work together, um, and they would make it work. Just not sure what, uh, when, we would have to identify those days because that would be a new, a new change.
I would say I did hear from a few parents on that, who, who said, didn't used to have half-days, you know, so I didn't hear from, it was not an overwhelming number who brought that up, but of the people who did bring it up, it didn't seem to be as much of a barrier as sometimes the full day off. I mean, it's, anytime, kids are not where you expect them to be, so it's gonna present a challenge to parents. But I think Nicole's right, those are one of the main drivers, it looked like, um, kids starting earlier and the use of half-days are the main thing that will pull that year sooner, so you're ending on a June tenth, eleventh, twelfth, which gives you that buffer, you know? Any district that had that, that's how they got it, also had that. So, you know, and not to say we need to do that right now, but I'm just, I, I do think it's something to think about, at least.
Yeah, I also don't love speaking for our teachers. I know there are some educators on the school committee, but I just, I, I just, I don't know. I mean, I'm hearing that they want collaboration time. I'm hearing that it's hard to logistically move from one building to the other if they only have a few hours. So I just want to make sure that their voice is central to this decision. I know, Ryan, you met with the PD committee. I'm just wondering, like, I, I know that you're, I hear what you're saying, that they appreciate any time. Like, that's, I'm hearing that. What I, I guess what we're really trying to get at is if they could wave the magic wand and pick, like, what, what do they want to see in the district in terms of their PD? Because like, quite frankly, it's, it's their time, right? Like, they're gonna be there and they need this time to do the work together, and whether it's implementing new curriculum or technology or whatever it is, so I just would love to hear a little more if you have it.
I'd like to add some context, if I could. So, if you recall, about three years ago, we had a, a real crunch on student learning time and meeting our time managed by the state, even the bare minimum. In fact, I think we were in, uh, five years ago when I got here, we found out that we were in, we were short of the high school. And at that time, we had many Wednesdays, half-days, and we had to have the late start at the high school. Um, so these all contributed to us being near the bottom, and I think that was very concerning at the time for the school committee, certainly to me, both student learning time. And I, I like the idea of ending early, starting, like, I mean, we're at work anyway, so it doesn't matter to me. So I'm, I think I'm unbiased in this, I'll be here if we start in mid-August or end in late June. Right? We're here because of student learning and academics, but, so I think we should start from that base. And I think what happens is, when you trade in a half-a-day, we get credit for the day from the state, but the kids only are here for half the day. So we lose three hours every time we whack a half-a-day off. And so if you do that three, uh, six times, you're, you're, you're losing the two days of learning mathematically that you just gained by starting early two days. So I think right there, it was a problem, the reason why we got rid of it. The PD council is made up of teachers, department chairs, um, you know, and what we were seeing on the, uh, feedback of all the PD we do is we just didn't have enough time for the half-day. We couldn't travel. It limits you, like we said, versus a P, a full day. And, uh, and what you can do by offering, you know, the whole district time together just because of the travel, parking with dismissal at different times, that you can't get into the building, so, you know, think about that. It's literally, it would just feel a nightmare as well. You get out of school at whatever, twelve o'clock, and by the time you get over somewhere else at twelve-twenty-five and find parking, you get into the room where the meeting is, it's one o'clock, and, you know, tired, and versus getting there at eight AM, ready to work, having the ability to get, um, all different groups together, really broadens your ability to create, um, a well-structured PD day. So for all those reasons, I'm, if you recall on this, that's one area that I've lived and have been, um, evenly against for all those reasons. And I just think it, and also, we got parent complaints. We got a lot of parent complaints, but I, I got a middle, middle of nowhere on Wednesday, I gotta pick my kid up at half-day and I'm in Boston working, versus the one day where I know that day's off, you know, instead of five, half-a-day. So it was an inconvenience for pretty much everybody. So I think that's tempting, and it shortens the year, but are we about shortening the year or are we about providing great PD and, and, um, more hours we can, as more hours as we can in the classroom in front of teachers as we can for our kids?
Nicole I appreciate that explanation. Sorry, Carrie.
No, no, I was just gonna say, I will say that your earlier point around the continuity, because right, that we know best practices of PD is not episodic, right? It's ongoing and continuous. And so I wonder if, this is not to solve tonight, but I wonder if the next conversation after we settle this is, how do we support the teachers in their daily schedule so that when they do a day of PD, that there are opportunities within their regular schedule to do some follow-up that aren't half-days out of school, but like a collaboration period, or right, like, what's the thread that's keeping those conversations going? And how can we, as a school committee, help, you know, our central office think about building it? Just like we build in wind blocks for students, what does it look like for a teacher and a team of teachers? Um, so I think, again, not gonna solve it tonight, but I do, I don't want to lose your thread of the importance of continuity across those, you know, day-long PDs.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. I, I totally, totally agree. And more posing that as food for thought in terms of half-days versus full-days because of just feedback, and I think it's good for parents and, and, um, stakeholders to know what the thought processes, and thank you Superintendent Burkett. That was a good explanation of, of the why and where, how we got to the full days, because we get that question of, you know, ah, a whole day off and on a random day of the week, like, why? Why are we not, you know, doing it this way? So there's, there was in- intentional shifts there, and it sounds like that's, that's a good thing. Okay, so, what else? Oh, we did have the, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say one more thing about voting. So that's a, a question that has come up, um, is why must we close all the schools on voting day? So, um, I've been trying to do some research on this, and basically, in situat, um, we do not have another location that would be large enough and handicapped accessible and a parking, all of that, to accommodate, uh, one single polling place. So instead, we'd be looking at precinct-based polling places, which would mean we would need several of them, of which there do not seem to be enough. Also, it increases the cost quite a bit, because then at each polling place, you'd need the police details and the different warrants and deputies and things like that that are staffing the, the polling places. So it would come at a, at an increased cost. So it's not to say it couldn't happen in the future, but I don't know that there's an appetite to take on such a cost right now. However, it is possible to close just the high school on a voting day. I know that that would be unusual, because it would be kind of odd to say like, oh, the high school doesn't have school today, but, uh, no, you don't have to close gates, I asked. We keep gates open. So, anyway, I think, um, you know, that would be unconventional. I did see another cali, at least one other calendar that did split to teach your professional development by, uh, level. So there were some days where the elementary was at a half-day, but the other schools didn't. So it's not completely unprecedented, but I know that would take some further creativity and thinking. So I say that not for next year's calendar, but possibly for September of twenty-twenty-six, when we will have a state election. Maybe we could start thinking about whether that would be a possibility and what that might look like.
Yeah, that kind of segues into my thought. I think we have the shift, the Labor Day question at hand right now, and then there's some subsequent components to this, you know, including one that Dr. Kowski just mentioned too, about threads and how that ties into workday pieces, but, you know, how to support teachers. But, yeah, so step one here really is, perhaps, this, this is kind of a big shift in and of itself, and maybe those other pieces are, how do we build up to those? But, um, I did want to note too that the situation article stated, I think it was seventy-five percent or something of, um, high school students are participating in fall athletics, so that's a really active campus, uh, for good August. It's a lot of, a lot of kids out there. The weather component, I think, was touched on. Thank you, Carrie, for almanacking that out. Trying to think of what else. I do think it's, it, the emphasis can't be placed enough on just sort of that attentiveness, September versus June, for students especially, obviously, but, um, and, you know, it's not, I think Superintendent Burkett's Thursday Thoughts survey, there was, I forget the numbers exactly, but it, the biggest support of that sample wanted to go back were teachers who said they wanted to go back before Labor Day. Not a, a massive sample size, but they had the highest majority go back before. You know, I don't know. I do think, I, I like a calendar, and I think it was Ms. Fenwick who brought this up last time with the November, just this particular year with the weird Tuesdays. I think it would be good for that sort of flow if the fourth was the tenth, maybe, but
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that helps us address some of the problems that we see sometimes with, um, with families taking vacations on non-vacation weeks, which I think cost is a huge driver when parents make that decision. And I understand that, um, as a parent of PD, like, taking your family anywhere is extremely expensive. Um, and so if there's an opportunity to give people an extra, like, I, I, I think that's where's another town that I've seen them do this. They'll back a PD day up with an existing three-day weekend to kind of throw parents a bone, I think, um, in terms of like, you know, if you're gonna have the day off, you may as well, maybe this is a time you could fly somewhere, or, you know, do the type of thing you might not be able to do during, uh, when the entire state is also trying to fly. So I think that is something that I would like to see, just ease that a little bit, you know, for, for parents.
You know, I thi- I think if the tenth, was, were you talking about like maybe the tenth, the PD day?
Yeah, moving the PD day from the fourth to the tenth.
But I think, you know, we, as long as the, the election is on the fourth, is like really
But it's not next year. Next year, there's no election.
I, I think Ryan had it in there for that continuity of
Continuity
That for Tuesdays, election Tuesday. But this twenty-five, six calendar, it's not, maybe it makes more sense to do the tenth.
First of all, this is new, it's a new win situation. I think Maria, everyone that spoke, I, I fully agree with everything that has been said, and it's not an easy answer. I think that, um, I think I had brought up the weather a couple of years ago about that, but I think it's a real issue. I think that the data that we got was like, August was slightly hotter, but it wasn't a big deal. And obviously, you can get really hot day, really cold day, rainy day, or whatnot. And I mean, we could talk about all different angles, but there's one angle that I do think, I mean, with high school kids, seventy-five percent of the kids participating in a score, I don't know if that means that it's easier for them to potentially go back to school, or that complicates things, because I know that there are practices and so on that have been historically scheduled that week before school. So I don't know if that would even push high school practices back another week, because they can only practice whatever a week or so before school begins. So I'm not sure what complexity that brings in. I don't really know. And then with elementary students, um, you know, I guess, I feel like it's okay waiting and going back into September, and just in September, um, or after Labor Day. And then again, on the high school side, I do think that the AP exams are an important consideration. But I'd ask Kate about the, um, kind of the format of the AP exam. Is it interesting? I didn't know that we actually take days, I don't know if it's two-hour blocks to take these exams. I'm just trying to figure, I can figure in my head exactly what that looks like and how much time it takes away from their other learning. I'm not sure it really does, because it's the end of the year, but it does to some degree. If they're taking a two-hour exam and a fifteen-minute block, they're obviously missing that second block. If they're taking five AP exams, junior and or senior year, that's a lot of time. So I don't know if that necessarily is offset by starting school earlier or later, but just a, an observation. I think probably what's more, um, would be more important relative to AP exam, I know this is focusing on the high school, is our successes or failures, or, or I guess, if our student's not getting four or fives, what are the reasons for that? Is one of them, they're not getting enough instruction? Is one of them absenteeism, either on the teacher or the student? Like, what is, what is, what's causing the, either the, the good or the other not, uh, not good AP things? So with all that being said, I don't know which is better. I feel like this year, I guess ultimately, I, I took an informal, or formal poll in my neighborhood of families with kids of all different ages, split fifty-fifty. My family
It's really incredible how that has held up.
Yeah, my family is vehemently opposed to going back before Labor Day. And I think this year particularly, and it is, we're getting out a little bit late this year, and then we're starting early, so it makes the summer extra short. And I think they will always have that problem, so one year if we do decide to go back before, we're gonna have that issue. But this particular year, we're getting out June, maybe June eighteenth, and we'd be going back in August, so as So as. As, as quoted by a family member, they can only have one full month obviously.
I think what.
That's all, that's all.
Got it.
I think, I think it is important though to remember that we're only talking about an August start when Labor Day is on September 1st or 2nd. Like, this is not a typical, I think the problem is not actually next year. The problem is years when we're going back to school on September 9th.
I agree.
That's the problem. I think that to me is a very clear, like, no one should be starting school September 9th. There is legitimately no camp that is running on September 4th, 5th, 6th, you know what I mean? So like, that to me is absolutely like the problem. Next, this coming year just happens to be the anomaly year that comes every, whatever, seven years, whatever it is, that, um, is not a problem.
Right, real, right.
Do you know what I mean? Start school September 2nd, uh, right? Which is what it would be, is actually no different than what it would be if we kept the same model. And in future years, uh, Labor Day was on the 8th, we'd still be starting on September 2nd. So we're not actually gaining that many days. So I guess to me that also begs the question of whether we wanna revisit the idea that we've discussed in the past about a model where we have a cut, a cutoff. So like, if it's September 3rd, 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, we start after Labor Day. Meaning the first day of school would be the second, you know, one day after.
Yeah.
And then if it's September 4th or later, we flip and start before. Do you know what I mean? Then we, we're starting school around the same day every year.
I guess I would just, I appreciate what you're saying, Maria. I just wonder for families, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing the students talk about tradition. Like, the problem with that scenario for me is that now families can't count on, like, the longer Labor Day, right? Cause we're giving them Friday and Monday. So like, if we change the calendar for good, then they're getting a little bit longer vacation versus we'll some months, some week, years they will, some years they won't. And so I'm just wondering, you know, could we start new traditions if we start before Labor Day where they're doing something on a long weekend? Uh, again, I, I, I don't really know. The other thing, Peter, I appreciated your observations around AP. I don't know that starting before Labor Day can solve any of this because we have so many students. I mean, how many folks come in front of us and talk about these amazing trips that our students are taking where they're out of school? We have athletes who are out of school. We have, um, uh, the DECA that are out of school, the Model UN who are out of school, right? So we have all these different constituencies. So I don't know that we can even ever solve that sort of issue, right? Cause they're all into so many cool things that do take them out of the, the school year. And, and changing the calendar is not really gonna impact that either way, in my opinion, so.
To speak to the having like the date, a cutoff date. I think if we just, if parents, I mean, currently the, the expectation is we start the Tuesday after Labor Day. If we, moving forward, we just say, we're gonna be, the, the kids are gonna be going back to school. The, um, Wednesday and Thursday be the Labor Day. So every year, it's the Wednesday and Thursday before Labor Day. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, no matter what the date. Cause our ultimate goal is to help us at the end of the year.
All right. Well, I think we've discussed it thoroughly and I, I'm here for a motion. If anyone is, uh, interested in. Well, and although, one thing about moving that, that Tuesday in November, so.
Tuesday, November 4th to Monday, November 10th.
Right. I mean, whoever's making the motion can present it probably like.
But that could be either way depending on the start. It doesn't matter. Start date could be either, yeah.
No, I mean, but just we're, we're voting on the 25, 26 calendar. So in this iteration, it's, you know what I mean? It's like, it's the 4th. That's, there are no, there's no reason for it to be the 4th. It could easily be the 10th this coming September, you know, this coming school year. I think that would be helpful for parents.
So would we vote twice or would we vote once with multiple things in it?
Well, I was thinking if someone was gonna make a motion, it's as, as, yeah, right. If that's the change that the person making the motion wants to make.
Uh, would we change the, the PD day to the 10th? Does that affect anything we have scheduled for that PD day?
Not yet, no. Thank you for asking.
So we're getting a 40 weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
So it's the calendar as presented, I mean, as amended?
If that's what you wanna give a motion for?
That's what the 2017, the first day.
I just thought of, can I ask one more question? Sorry. The thing that's holding me back is just the idea that I know that, you know, some people have already made, uh, plans assuming that we would follow the same pattern that we've always followed, which is going after. So I just worry that this particular year stands to be disruptive at the beginning of the school year with kids who are going to miss those days. And I think if we do that, it just, I just worry that it will get things off on the wrong foot. If, if teachers and families experience this year as particularly, is my only worry. And I don't know, I, I don't know, I have no way of knowing what hell art that number is. Maybe it's tiny and I just happen to occur from three of them. Uh, but I don't know. I don't know. So I just wanted to say that one last piece.
So if, if that's, if that's the case, cause I think that's something to think about. How, how do you imagine we prevent, prevent that in next year? Because there could be people that aren't sure what we're gonna do. So I'm just wondering like, at what point do we prevent that?
Well, I think we gotta start talking about the calendar like in the fall, um, because we can see it coming. There's nothing that prevents us except for the fact we have all these other things we also wanna talk about. But if we really commit to putting this on the agenda much earlier, like there are some districts that publish their calendar, I think, two years out, I've seen. So, um, you know, we really commit to that and say, this is something that we're gonna do. I think that or some type of a, a, a cut date or, you know, I guess we can't vote on next year's calendar now, but, you know. I guess that's, that's how I think about it.
Yeah, I mean, and don't forget, we don't vote the last day of school until we know more information there either. So that's always in somewhat of a less situation.
We could air voting on the last day of the school year with the Thursday, two-year, of the following year. Right? Could talk about anyways.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no reason not to, honestly. Like, we can look as far as we want and see when Labor Day is.
Yeah.
And then I think it would hopefully help, you know, Ryan and the PD committee to get planning and parents on travel and things like that, you know.
Anyone can make a motion at any time if they're.
I feel like they should just rip the band-aid off and just do this. I mean, there are gonna, there're gonna be parents that have already made plans at the end of the year too. I mean, it's, and there are some people that make plans to go away on school days, so.
That's true.
We can only do what we can do.
All right. Anyone? And you don't have to vote how you, how you wanna vote.
I am making a motion that the school committee approve the 25, 26 school calendar as amended.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. We have a second.
A second.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Burkowski.
I knew you were gonna, I knew you were gonna make me go first, Nicole. That's why I vote, I vote yes.
Okay, Fenwick. I go right down the line. I'm very predictable.
Can I explain my vote while I vote? Can I say a word? Or am I just voting?
Just vote.
I'm a no, I'm a no only because of the, the, the particular problems for next year that I named. I am a yes overall of the concept of.
But technically you're a no.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Enwick.
Yes.
So this is not the first time I've been in this position. Okay, uh, Randall Lady, yes. The motion passes. Read it to. What we have on this.
On this.
And the district local staff tell you that I voted the other day last year.
So just to clarify, for next year, the P school will start for students, August, Wednesday, August 27th. They lost school Wednesday, August, I'm sorry, Thursday, August 28th. And the rest of the calendar will be published at some point soon.
PK to K.
Yeah, September 2nd. September 2nd for PK kindergarten camp. And the calendar will be published soon to show all the other days and things like that.
That is correct. And, and the as amended part would identify two, based on the vote of the committee, so I have it correct. Tuesday, November 4th is a full school day, 2025. Monday, November 10th will be a professional development day and no school, followed by Tuesday, November 11th, which is a federal holiday. So we will make those changes and that will be the voted in school calendar for, for next year.
Will it go up via push notification for families of the. Or can, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get it out ASAP, but that's important.
Thank you. I know people are eager.
Do that and put it up on the website. Where, we'll just have to make sure, uh, again, I don't, sorry, I'm focusing on athletic, but I don't know what the rules are relative to athletic start. They can.
We think MIA sets that.
She, we know that, they have, they have start dates. Doesn't matter what school starts. Okay. It's, cause they, school, they couldn't do that because every school starts, as we talked about tonight at a different time. So they, they'll have the first game, they'll work brackets from the cutoff date, which we call a cutoff date, which is the last game you can have. And they'll move it forward preseason, so X amount of days before or after Labor Day, so similar to what you do. So it won't have an impact as far as when the kids start or.
We have a little bit more work to do here. We have an approval of minutes from January 27th and February 3rd. Questions, comments? Good to me? Anyone else? Oh, February 3rd and January 27th.
I can make a motion, yeah?
Oh, okay. Anyone who wants to.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the January 27th, 2025, and February 3rd, 2025 minutes as presented.
Okay, a second. All right, uh, Burkowski.
Yes.
Fenwick?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Linblock?
Yes.
Randall Lady, yes. Right. Lawrence?
Oh, we have correspondence.
Correspondence. Yeah, we're not there yet. We're definitely, we'll do our correspondence.
We have February 3rd too.
She did.
I did.
Oh, you did?
At the same time.
Wow.
No warrants tonight?
No.
Correspondences.
Ryan? Oh, I just wanted to say thank you to the, uh, students from, I think it's Wamputuck who.
Yes.
Made Valentines for us. I think we all got a little pack, a packet of them. So that was just really lovely to see and we're very appreciative of them. Yeah.
Beautiful artwork and honestly, really, my Valentines have fantastic handwriting. All right, um, any other business?
Uh, I will, I don't know, I assume everyone got the email from the state of Massachusetts that we have to aim. I don't know if it was.
Yes, I just sent it in my last week.
If I just gotta go to my birthday or we just get it every year, we have to.
Two years.
Every two years you need to do the ethics.
Oh, yeah.
Certification and or training classes. Make sure you do that and send your, um, certificate, I guess, to Kathy.
Oh, you have to send your certificate in?
Your.
Yeah. We think, yeah, she collects.
Technically, uh.
Yeah. I think you can just email it too, or Maria, I think you can just.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can email it.
Oh, okay.
After you've completed your.
They start sending you these notifications that you.
Oh, no, I did mine. I just didn't send those.
I think it's two years.
I didn't send that certificate in.
Okay. Okay, um, any future agenda items?
So we got a great email from Mr. Lynch today about the Wi-Fi and networking. And I would love to hear more about that in the future, just because I've heard from families just what Mr. Lynch was describing, sort of intermittent service in different parts of gates, you know, in terms of disrupting learning. And so it would be awesome because we have a new team just to hear what they're doing, how that's going, just to sort of level set expectations for families and students. N- not pressing, just more of a curiosity. But I appreciated seeing that email, Ryan. It's good to get those updates.
Well, thank you.
All right, uh, if nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 7:26.
Second. All right, second by Ms. Fenwick. Roll call vote, Ms. Burkowski.
Yes.
Dr. Burkowski, it's my fault. And I started back, sorry. Mr. Gates, Ms. Linblock?
Yes.
And Randall Lady, yes.